Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 17th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the ever-changing exits around the room. And I'll join once we slip the American flag.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I get a motion to reopen the public hearing for Carriage Trails, also known as Crofton News?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kaufman?
Aye, Lou Kaufman for the applicant. I noticed that on the agenda, just listed for the extension. I think I've taken care of all the paperwork and the fees for that, so hopefully that's no longer an issue. Of course, I would love to be able to at least put the findings in place. Been working with Bonnie and Pete and everybody regarding that. I suspect it's not happening tonight, but that would be a welcome surprise. And the other part of that, I think, is the floodplain development permit. So I got the HECS and I've responded. Pete's going to make sure that there was sufficient information. And based upon the conversation we all had with DEC, if the HECS is completed or satisfactory, I think that could issue a floodplain development permit. I wouldn't presume to tell her what to do. She would never listen anyway, but that seems to be where I'm going.
Thank you. So let me turn it over to our consultants to start. Ms. Franson?
So I did reach out to DEC to see whether or not they're ready to move if they have any issues, so that you could consider issuing a finding statement. I had hoped that they would get back to me today. We knew it was going to be a short timeframe, and they didn't. But I think it will come in the next -- I'm being optimistic, and I think it will come in the next few days. And all we're asking is, what do you need, or do you have whatever you need, so that we can move forward with amended findings? Just to let us know, so we're not in this kind of
Holding pattern.
Holding pattern. So that's where we are. So as soon as I hear from them, I'll forward everything to the board.
Thank you. And Ms. Sotero?
Yeah, so the question that Bonnie had posed to the DEC, I don't know if the board was looped in on the email change, but -- so I had looked at the HECS analysis, you know, the floodplain analysis, because one thing we discussed, maybe it was on our agenda call, I don't remember when, but it came up about that there was actually going to be, based upon the hydraulic analysis, there was going to be a drop upstream in water elevation during a 50-year storm and like a 100-year storm, an average drop of about a foot and a half. So, you know, upstream is, you know, the turtle nesting area and the restricted area and all that kind of stuff. So the town just wanted DEC, like, to weigh in, whether they had any concerns about the drop in water elevation, and if it had any potential, you know, impact on, you know, the turtles. Now, we're talking a 50-year and 100-year, like, storm, so my guess is that they would say during that type of, you know, storm, there probably won't be an impact, but we'll wait to hear from them. So I also had a call yesterday with one of the engineers at my new office. We went through, you know, the background of the project. They had the prior CPL review memo on the HECS. He just sent me an updated memo, like, today. I just looked at it, like, briefly. I think everything, you know, is good, but I gotta look at it. I mean, I just -- it was late today. So -- and then I'd like for your guy to get back to me from Creighton, like, Manning, because I didn't understand why, you know, downstream of the bridge, that there was no change in water surface elevation between existing and proposed. I'm sure there's a reasonable explanation. I just couldn't really figure it out, so I figured that I could get it right from them. I think I know what it is, but -- so you're going to work with him to just get back to us?
Yes.
That's not going to have an effect on any secret findings, so that's just a question.
Right. That really is more toward the floodplain development
Yes, that's correct.
That you guys can have.
That's correct.
Check all your boxes.
Yep. And then, you know, the last item on my end, and we discussed this at the last agenda meeting, was, and we didn't think of this before, and we didn't think of this back when, you know, the site plan got, you know, amended, I don't know, maybe it was 2008 or something, but, you know, there's a requirement for the Moose Lodge to maintain access to their facility, you know, at any time. So with the four culverts being replaced by an open-span bridge, I asked Lou and his crew the question of, hey, how are you going to be able, like, to do this and be able to maintain access to the Moose Lodge? Now, they do have, they did, well, the prior owner purchased a parcel of property that fronts onto Green Tree Drive, north or south, I think it is, in Green Tree Park. So, but that's only supposed to be for emergency access. And so the reason for asking, you know, a lot of these questions in terms of how are you going to do this work and maintain one lane of access is not only to make sure that, you know, the Moose Club has access. And again, that in itself, the Moose Club having access is not necessarily a secret issue, but was -- but what does become a potential secret issue is if, is if their, you know, their contractor said, hey, look, I can't, I can't basically work from the east side of the bridge on the 9G side, that I gotta get to, I gotta get to the Moose Club side, I gotta be able to set up my equipment, I gotta spread out, I got a lot of stuff going on, I got piles being driven, I got, you know, cranes lifting pieces of concrete into place. So what that would mean is, they have to find access somewheres else, which would be off of a town road. Well, that brings up, okay, well now, wherever they would get access, whether it be Green Tree Park, I don't know that there's another one, but then is there impacts to the neighborhood from construction equipment? So anyways, you guys are going to try to give me something. I honestly don't know how they could do it, because there's only, there's less than 100 feet between the bridge and 9G. I don't know how you do it, you know, and set up everything, have parking for contractors. But hey, you know, if these -- so anyways, you're going to get, we don't need a formal, a big formal plan, but even some kind of, like, a narrative or an explanation of how this is going to be done. And at some point, like I said in my email, you know, when I've gotten stream disturbance permits from the DEC for bridges or larger, like, culverts, you always have to submit, like, a de-watering plan and a staging plan. So at some point, you're going to have to do that plan, and you'll get input from your contractor. But, you know, for right now, for secret purposes, we just want to know, hey, is this, like, feasible? Because we don't want you to come back later, and it's going to hurt you later if it says, hey, look, I need, I can't go do this, I gotta get access somewheres else. And then that opens up a whole nother can of worms and slows down your project, so it's better to, you know, iron it out, like, now. So I'll shut up now.
I think I pointed out in email, in the original signed plan set, back in 2006, I think it was.
Somewhere around there, yeah.
On page C9, which details the bridge. In the notes, note nine, I think it is, says that the bridge will be built in two sections with one lane always open for access to the Moose Lodge. It doesn't sound like they're going to do that, but that's on there. Note two, I believe, at the start, also says that there'll be a detailed construction phasing plan submitted to the town engineer for approval, and that's about the bridge, just the bridge itself will have construction plans. So they're required to, at some point, explain how this is to you. They have to.
Yes, right, that's correct. But like I said before, for where we are now for secret findings, if we can get, like, enough information that it can be proven that they can do all their work from the east side of the bridge, between the bridge and 9G, then, and, and maintain one lane of access for the Moose Lodge, then we can move ahead, you know, with SEACER, and then, you know, the details of that plan can get, you know, like, ironed out between, after, like, SEACER.
So what narrative that will summarize?
Something, I mean, like a sketch or, like, a narrative, or we have a phone call with your contractors, I don't know. We can figure it out. But we need something to, for, you know, the file to say that you're not going to use any town roads for construction access.
Right. So I believe that earlier, maybe late last week, we sent you a narrative, you know, from Mr. Brandt, who is in charge of, you know, getting the contractor and scoping out the work and all that, and it explained how it was going to work. I don't, I read it, and maybe it wasn't distributed.
It was, you know, like, a narrative. I know George has sent
It was an email.
I know George sent an email saying, you know, I think, basically, hey, we have a big-time marine
Yes, that was part of that email.
Construction firm
Right.
That, you know, does this work all the time.
Right.
I don't remember seeing any narrative.
Okay, so, well
But maybe, maybe there was an, I didn't know.
It was an email, and the narrative was the contents of the email. We didn't, you know, maybe I made it sound fancier than it is, but essentially, and my understanding is that we will, you know, we're going to put in the embuppments, you know, the footings for the bridges. Then we're going to take apart the north end of the bridge, that lane. We're going to leave the culverts and the head wall of the original bridge in place, so that would hold up the new bridge while we build it. We will build one lane, and then we will, and then, once that lane is in place, we will then start on the south lane. And that's how, that's how they told us they can do it. It adds a little bit of time, obviously, but, you know, and a little bit of expense. I was actually surprised to find out it wasn't an extraordinary amount of time, nor, you know, choking expense. I have trouble saying those things. But so it is doable. We're still, you know, looking around, but certainly we do have a reputable firm that can handle it. I will get you some more information
And just get us some.
On that detail. But it seems to be, you know, I do need, in fact, even the DEC ones, that they specifically have asked for, prior to mobilization, that they want to see.
Or prior to, prior to them
They want to see the, you know, water
Well, prior to them issuing, issuing a permit.
Right. And I have to submit that contractor, you know, and I responded that the contractor will be providing that, and we're not even allowed to start until they review it.
Well, your engineer's going to have to come up with a plan
Right.
To submit to them, and that's going to be part of their permit that they issue
Right.
That there's an acceptable, you know, plan for de-watering
Right.
And where the, where it's going to go. And again, we don't need to belabor, let's get, let's get together. I just know there's big pieces of, like, equipment that take up a lot of room to set, you know, the sections, the sections of the bridge, and, I mean, I just don't know how it can be done, but let's, you get us some information, we'll talk. Or get me some information, and we'll talk.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Ms. Moss, any comments?
No.
Ms. Pardaro?
No, just looking forward to not seeing you for a while.
I can't wait to see you again. I'm here, so I don't see Crofton News, you know, fully complete. We need to drill down a little on the plans themselves, so you guys understand and are satisfied with the current plan. I'm ready to do that. I think I'd like to get that in front of you people to take a look at right away.
We first want to amend the finding statement
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we're not amending the site plan. We're changing the site plan due to new information that requires mitigation, mitigative measures. I'm using this carefully as I speak, so we want to make sure we do that. And the biggest thing, I think, really is the DEC making sure that it's the water, the level of inundation for the Blenning's turtles, because they made you remove houses because of valuable habitat, so we want to make sure that the water stays where it's supposed to be for them. That's basically it. And then plus, as Pete says, it's, and that's based on the HECS analysis, and as Pete said, it's also, we should have some sort of narrative for, because I don't know what the easement looks like, or what it, I'm not even sure we ever saw what the easement is that grants the emergency ingress and egress there.
For the Moose Club?
No, for that, for the
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Leads over to Green Tree.
Yeah, right, right.
But I know that that includes a driveway and a backyard, so the prior owners bought the house and then leased it, so they put the burden on it.
Right.
So I don't know if that means that construction traffic can use it, or if it's reserved just for emergency
Oh, yeah.
Traffic, because I would think that if you were going to buy a house and not tear it down, so it could be an alternate road, that if you're going to rent it, you probably want to restrict how often it's used, otherwise your tenants are going to be going, "Wah wah wah wah." I know I would, so.
Anyways.
The applicant also can work with the Moose Lodge to come to some agreement to
Close it.
Which is why I'm trying to get his number.
Okay.
Yeah, he's
I think that, in the end, it does not, it's not an extraordinary amount of time, and I might suggest that they do their drinking somewhere else for a couple of months, so.
At your cost, I agree.
Yes, absolutely.
It's a bingo.
Absolutely.
Set up a tab somewhere else, and they're all set to go.
Right. Well, I mean, you, so I think
Anyhow, I need to talk to Tom Meyer
Tom Meyer.
And Meyer.
Yeah.
And, you know, he seemed very reasonable and not very aggressive in terms of denying, you know, concern. He's just concerned, and it's time for me to talk to him and see, you know, I can make it palatable.
I don't have any legal comments that haven't been discussed already.
Correct, thank you. And Victoria, just for everyone's identification up here, that's the reason why I was saying, remember, if we amend the site plan, then Ted is opine that it would have to come under the new zoning, which means he loses even more density. So to avoid that, and because the DEC is requiring this next reduction of density and the changes to the plan, we're just going to update the finding statement to reflect why these changes were made, et cetera, any new information as well, including the bridge. Once that's done, we'll have new sheets, and so I understand you asked Cynthia how to incorporate those into the existing plan sets. And when Victoria and I were discussing
We're going to call it, like, alternate mitigation plan.
That's what we're
With a note that says, you know, this plan reduces the density from the allowable site plan, just so it's clear, so you don't try and go and build a larger plan after. But without touching
I will put the zoning administrator at ease in terms of not considering it an amended site plan.
Correct. It's our, but so it'll be a plan sheet that we're going to attach or incorporate, and if you want to reprint the full plan set with that, it's probably the easiest.
Well, you know, I thought it was best for the, for everybody, that we, you know, we have a full set of drawings, but
Yeah.
And in fact, other than that northeast quadrant, it's not changing a lot.
That's precisely
I agree. Should be a full set with the mitigation sheet in it, with the right notes.
And entitled
Now, by mitigation, are you referring to the turtle mitigation plan?
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm using that word. We'll call it reduction, reduction plan, or
Gotcha. Yeah, that's
We'll figure out the right
The not amended, but reduced site plan.
And we're going to have a little wink-wink in there somewhere, right?
Right.
Again, we're just trying to protect you, and
I appreciate that.
So, because, just for the board, so we'll have, basically, the original 2006 or '07 plan set, but it'll have
Secret alternate plan.
It'll have, there you go, secret alternate plan. It'll have the new version with, you know, that'll require new signature, but it'll still have the old signature too, or something like that, but we're going to work that thing, that through. Any comments from the board?
No.
I didn't think there would be. So
The public?
Oh, anyone from the public like to speak about this application? I see a new face in a blue jacket over there. Who might want to, but no. There being none, may I get a motion to adjourn to February 21st?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So this will give us time, Pete, that's enough time, I think, for you to go through the HECS, or to have Richard Renia go through the HECS numbers?
Yeah, I think that they have already.
And Bonnie
I have a memo.
Copied me on the email to DEC, which we had a response of, "I'll try to reach about you tomorrow," but there was no tomorrow, it never came, as they say.
Well, it was one day, right?
They were very positive.
Yeah. So we're going to keep on contacting everybody to make sure we have Ts crossed, Is dotted, et cetera. But I think we, it seems like to me we're very close now, so if you can get that narrative, I mean, George's email, by the way, did not say exactly what you think. It's, it was pretty insulting and rude, saying that it was already outlined by John Andrews, which is why I went back and looked at the original plan. It does not say that.
That seems to be
John Andrews does not say any details of that.
That seems to be the way he, yeah.
So you just gave me more information
Maybe I'll be writing them from now on.
Well, you gave me more information, gave us more information than we had in that email. So I blame them for being cratchety. It's, it's been a long time, it's a long project. But if you can just say what you more or less said, or have your construction people give a little description.
Right. I'll take a, I'll take a look at the scope of work and try
And if you need a call with your construction firm too, after, like, a narrative, that's fine. We'll do it.
Sounds good. Very good.
So we'll see you in
Do we both?
February 21st.
Five weeks, we have an extra week.
Oh, that's bad.
No, that's actually good. It's more time.
We have a five week.
We have an extra week, that's why.
So So how does the shortest month have an extra week? Could you explain that to me? And why are the four-day weeks longer than the five?
It's January, it's January. It's January, it's January has the good week.
We're not the shortest month.
Right.
Okay.
So we'll be back in touch, I'm sure, once we hear from you, from the construction guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
February 21st.
The next item on the agenda is the CIA Hotel and Villas. This applicant's requesting site plan approval. We're actually here tonight to discuss the AAF, but before we do so, I mean, the AOF, to discuss SEACER, before we do so, may I get a motion to go into attorney-client?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Victoria, do you need anybody else in this with us? Or would like?
Yes, because we're going to be talking about something that involves biology, I think it'd be helpful to invite the planner into it to opine.
Okay. Bonnie, can you join us? Thank you. We'll be right back.
Are you being patient, Wade?
I'm being patient, yes, polite. I was raised a Catholic, so.
Are you nodding?
I'm going.
Would you like me to trade over to you first?
Wait, can we just come out of our
Oh, I'm sorry. May I get a motion to go into regular session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 So I'm afraid that I was wrong, that it looks like we're not ready for SEACER tonight, because no one has had time up on the board to digest 59-page letter, sent at 5:26 tonight. I'll let each person kind of comment on that, if they'd like, but for the purposes of the audience who may be watching, I had a conversation today with someone from Fish and Wildlife, so I understand now more what was going on, so, and that was part of our discussion. You guys are going through NEPA, when you go directly to
Army Corps.
Army Corps and Fish and Wildlife. Because they're not on our SEACER list, we don't know what's going on when you guys are sending information back and forth. I believe we asked that we should be copied, but we haven't until recently. So in talking to the new person, yes, you're right, she's very new, she didn't know what SEACER was, or what a planning board was, just so you know. Their concerns are that your original report from Delta had that there were a lot of trees, or large amount of trees, highly suitable for habitat. They're not saying that there are anything there, et cetera. She told me that there was a conference call yesterday with all you guys, and the suggestion came out from Mr. Fishman to walk the site, I think it was, and take a look and see, sort of assess how many trees there might be in this 26 or 27-acre area to be removed. Does that sound right? And then if he opined, looks like there's not that much, then that would be fine for them, more or less, she said. If there's a lot, then they may want you to do different mitigation, that's what's in the letter from the 10th, i.e. off-site, compensatory mitigation, or even project changes. And so the first step would be, we think, this assessment by Mr. Fishman, who wrote the 59-page letter we received. Am I right on that?
That isn't what he proposed, but let me, there's nothing inaccurate about what you just said, but let me maybe give it a little more context. No one disputes any of the relevant facts here, and they've been out there since 2021. The letter that said that the habitat study of June 21st, 2023, that they're looking at, there were studies and correspondence sent to Fish and Wildlife since 2021 that we were sending, that Delta was sending to them. Everyone agrees, in every one of the reports, there is potential roosting habitat trees on the property. Maple, oak, alder trees, trees with snags in them. That's been in every report. That's every report, and these are all reflected, and one of the reasons why I thought we could go forward today, these are all reflected in your neck deck, that there are suitable trees. Everyone agrees, there's never been a known occurrence, event occurrence, of a bat anywhere near the project site. The closest that anyone, and everyone agrees that none of the databases that we all look to, everyone looks to, to identify an occurrence, has said no occurrence. ERM, EAF, the Natural Heritage, and alike. So all those, all those databases have shown no event occurrence. There was one in the Natural Heritage, possibly four and a half miles ago, but that wasn't even four and a half miles, but that isn't even the one that Fish and Wildlife cited. They said there was a, they were talking about the one in the letter, eight miles in La Grange. And our consultant said, "Ladies and gentlemen, do you know that, I worked on that, the La Grange, that tree's no longer there, that tree fell, and there is none." But that was the only occurrence. So everyone agrees that there's been no event occurrence anywhere near the site. Everyone agrees that we have, we have proposed the conservation measure to only cut during the seasonal times, during the winter seasons. Thus, very unlikely ever to have it taken. Everyone agrees that not only are we preserving thousands of trees around our site, but we did the tree cover analysis of two and a half miles, and there's 6,440 acres of forested land in the area. That means the area, if you assume that all the habitat that we're cutting down is, all the trees we're cutting down is habitat, that's 0.42%. The Forest Service uses 30% as a adverse impact. If you're cutting down 30% of the trees in your two and a half mile, that becomes an adverse impact. The, there was no question, we're replanting 800 hardwood trees on the property, three to five inches, not just small trees. They'll eventually grow mature and be additional habitat. So those were all the facts that everyone knows. So we made this submission, going back in 2021, in the letter they cite to June 21st, 2023, submission, we made. The next time we hear from them, after talking to them, talking to them, was October 10th, 2023, we get a letter from them. It says, their boilerplate letter, in caps, "There are no critical habitats within your project area under this auspices jurisdiction."
And who's that from?
This is from Fish and Wildlife.
Because we just saw, we have records that were sent to us today from May of 2023, and more recently, September. It was incomplete, it was incomplete.
So we made the submission in June. This is the next letter we get from the boilerplate letter.
Did we ever see this?
They identified the bat, and they identified there's no, and in this letter, they don't, they don't say that our application is incomplete, they don't ask for any further consultation. So during this period, Delta So during this period, Delta is calling, is calling Nancy Duran. She's the representative for Forest Service who's on this. Not responding, not to responding, because you have this letter. All of a sudden, December 5th, they reassign someone to this woman you spoke with, a new person. Then we get a letter, January 10th, that you saw. "We decided we'd like one more confirmation test," out of nowhere. Now, if they would have done that in June, or they would have done that in 2023 or 2022, we could have done it. Now, it's, it really is, aside from the timing of it, the substance of it, one, your, your, your neg deck cites all the applicable. There is potential, da-da-da-da-da. I think, just as a matter of secret and fairness, that we, we get our secret finding now. Like many, many involved agencies we all work with, sometimes they may come up with wanting additional information. They do it all the time. We do it. If it, if it, if it's a confirmation and it changes, any material change, then we have to go back and either do supplementation on the secret, which is statutory supplementation secret, that you're all familiar, or, as you said in your finding with respect to the DEC, if it comes up that they want a design change, or we require a design change, we have to come back to you and you leave it open. That's the fair. If we stop now, first of all, we lose another month and a half. I met with the ZBA chairman today. They're ready to move forward next week. We keep it moving. If we stop now, these are the types of things that kill projects. We absolutely lose a complete year of construction. We go back to invest. We're spending, we've spent during this timeframe, I know because they give me a hard time about my billing, NRI has spent millions of dollars, millions. Every contract has been completed, every contract, all the leases, all the declarations, all the rental program contracts, all the construction contracts, every contract has been being worked on. All us, what we've been doing with you all, all the, all the architecture's being done. We're all getting ready for site plan. These are the types of things, "Well, we want one more test. Sorry, we didn't tell you that for a year or two, but give us one more." All right. If it's required, and I have a feeling we'll be able to work with them, we had, we had five days to talk with them since we got this, so we really didn't have to. But we hired someone who, I gave you the name of Ariana Supervisor, who they trust very, very much. So we'll be able to work something out. But let us go, let us go forward. Let us move forward, or else, you know, these are the type of things that.
So I want to just point out again, this is all new information for us because we didn't know any of this was going on. This was blindsiding me. Do you understand that?
As we were.
No, it can't be blindsiding. Go back to the first date you said you referred this over to US Fish and Wildlife. What's the first date you sent letters to them? What was the date? 2021, didn't you say?
The first date?
Yeah, they said since 2021.
What do you mean?
Since 2021.
No, the, the report went to Army. The report went to the Army Corps in June of 2023.
What were the letters you said you referred to earlier?
The letters that he was referring to was the studies that Delta did on the project for the bats.
The letters, the response letters from US Fish and Wildlife, how many are there? Are there some from May and from December of this year?
Do we have them all? Because they're not in that. I just looked through that.
We never received these.
It's part of the problem.
We, we don't have a response letter in May. We submitted in June.
You have our habitat. We did submit.
Bonnie, do you have those letters? The letters, the first two that you sent?
October one, I'm not sure. I know this is May.
They're totally from them.
You had two attachments earlier from USFS?
So.
I thought the dates were May.
The October ones, first I heard of October.
Yeah, I don't recall October.
That's from them.
Yeah, we know. You just, you just presented it to Michael. I'm asking if you had a copy of it.
Yes.
I don't think we do.
We didn't get it.
So I went into the IPAC, Steve Sheridan allowed me access to it.
Right, right.
And so there are two letters in there. One is saying that regarding, oh, pardon.
There are two letters in there. One is saying that northern long-eared bat, they believe that that's a no effect. The one that they had not signed off on is the Indiana bat. That's the one in question. And in looking at IPAC, in fact, I don't recall seeing an October letter in here.
There it is.
Yeah, I'm actually looking at their website, so maybe they didn't upload it, or, you know, I'm not sure.
You know, it's, it's, first of all, we did send you all, in November, we gave you habitat assessments. We have sent you habitat assessments, Michael, that says exactly what I'm presenting now.
I'm not saying that you didn't send us habitat assessments. We asked to be copied on all correspondence to external agencies. We have not seen anything so far from Army Corps or Fish and Wildlife until suddenly, as of this week. That's what I'm trying to say.
So I, I think where the board was, because what's in the neg deck, is that the trees wouldn't be cut within the sensitive timeframe, you know, the kind of the standard DEC time period. And then you're getting a letter a few days out that says, "We don't think you're done here." So now we're not certain that that is the mitigation at this point. And that's, never mind, this board has to come up to speed on all the various documents that they just received. That's what they've been expressing. But I, again, a lot of material submitted by Deltech, they definitely were submitting some of the various US Fish and Wildlife service letters. I'm just not recalling the October one in particular that you just mentioned. I do, we saw the May. Didn't see the October that I recall. And then, of course, we have the recent submissions, so.
So nothing happened between October and January to prompt this new letter? It just came out of the blue?
Correct.
Wow.
Does the October?
A new, a new.
A new reviewer.
A new, a new person is assigned. Ariana's assigned December 5th. She looks at the file. We had been talking with Nancy Duran. Do you have?
But why is the file still open? If the October letter is a sign-off?
Correct. That's what I don't understand.
Why, why was anyone still looking at it?
On their part?
Well, was the October letter a sign-off letter?
October letter is, is viewed as, it's not a no effect letter, but it is a letter that says, "We have no problem."
So the, I know the one in the IPAC, there's a no effect for the northern long-eared.
Yes.
For sure. The Indiana bat, I didn't see anything. Yeah, that's what we do.
But compared to the letters that you're citing to in May, they were saying, "All right, we want to continue. It's incomplete. You need to give us more information."
Correct.
You know, so forth. So in June, we present to them additional information. Then we get.
You're saying in October?
And that information, that information was, was very forthcoming. We have suitable habitat. You know, we had habitat assessments that we gave you.
That's in the reports.
That we gave you all by Delta, that, that recognized the same thing. We have habitat, we have suitable habitat. We have looked at the specific databases, which we gave you too in our habitat assessments. They didn't show any, any event occurrences. And then we get this October 10th letter. It's not a no effect, but it appears to say, "Okay." So yes, we're asking them, "Do you have a no effect letter? Is there a no effect letter?" We're not getting any response until last week.
Do you have an extra copy of that?
You know, I think what's frustrating is that you never even gave us a copy of that letter, so we weren't in the loop that you were still waiting on the no effect letter. But, I mean, the problem here is that you gave us the habitat assessments, and the board was relying on the conclusions from your experts that said, "If you do these three things, there won't be any impacts." But now that ACOE has expressed some disagreement, I think the board just wants a little bit of time to go back and see if, if there's any reason the board should be taking another look.
Well, the only, the only thing that they expressed is right here in the letter, and.
Which we don't have.
Could we get copies of that?
And to take what you're saying a little further, Victoria? We sent them to your people.
We were also given a 59-page document from the person you are saying that Fish and Wildlife supports, that none of us have had a minute to digest.
I was.
So if you came before us tonight with a new site plan, we would not be able to conclude seeker because it's new material. And I don't believe that we do that.
Chris, I was asked, I was asked, "Could he be here tonight?"
Yes, to answer the question.
I said, I said, "No, I don't think so." So, so Victoria, I thought made a reasonable adjustment. Well, look, can you at least get something maybe written or something like that? So, so I had this submitted.
If I may point out, I don't mean this rudely, and I don't want to somehow sell your reputation, but Victoria did not ask you that. You said, "This Fishman thing is going to solve it," and she said, "Well, wait. Is he going to be there tonight for the board to ask questions?" I grant, no, I grant you that you said the letter, but this is, you're making it sound as though we called you up and said, "How can we help with this?"
No, no, no. I'm not. Believe me.
Well, I said at some point, we need to address, you know.
Yes, but I also want to point out, because you keep saying that there's no known occurrences. There won't be known occurrences unless there's been a survey or a study. Would there be?
No.
Right. And that's another thing, the Fish and Wildlife points out that they may want you to do a survey, a present survey. I spoke to the young lady myself, too. What's getting me is that, that's why I wanted to have a chance to read all the, I mean, I read the summary of Mr. Fishman. But the two kinds of mitigation that the Army Corps could require, off-site, which we wouldn't know about, Adams and Wapandry, I believe, had created a new forest someplace because of all the trees taken down. That can also require changes to the plan set. In this case, maternal bats, when they roost, these are cave bats, so they go down to warmer climes because our caves are too cold. When they come back, maternal colonies roost together. It's not just one bat hanging down. It would be some sort of colony of them, because females are the only ones who take care of the pups, the kids. So what they could do, if I'm guessing right, and I don't think this is going to happen, but that's why I'm a little uncomfortable and want to just wrap my head around this more. If Mr. Fishman goes through and says, "Hey, there's a lot of trees here. Maybe we should do a survey." I'm not saying he will, but if he does, there's netting, or there's acoustic. Belfield across the street was required to do an acoustic survey because of the Army Corps. They had to get, before they could get the JD, I believe it was, and the permit to do some fill. So that wasn't going to be a change in the project plans there. But if you did a survey and discovered that there are some, and they said, "Okay, keep this copes of trees right here. Maybe it's a five acre or something or other," then, and that would be the mitigation because these are where the bats are and they're roosting together, whatever. That's a big project change. It would come back to us, I know, but we would have to, we would be reopening seeker ultimately as well. So I'm just trying to understand, and once again, we keep saying there's no known occurrences. There's never any known occurrence unless a board like ours has required there to be a survey.
Michael, respectfully, there are known occurrences within the vicinity of the project. That's what all the databases are for. There have been no known occurrences.
How do they find the occurrences? Who's out there looking?
They, they do different projects. They do their own netting. They have plenty, their databases are meant to do that. That's, it's not, otherwise, Michael, according to your theory, every project would require to do testing, which they don't require.
No, no, no. That's not what I'm saying. If it adds up to enough of suitable habitat, et cetera, then you can require testing. More than that, I know that if you're creating a critical environmental area, there are other ways that you can show up on the environmental mapper.
Michael, they made a finding in October 10th, as well as other dates, that there is, we, there is no critical habitat within that project area, based on, based on that. I mean, we have done a significant amount of evaluation on this. It's not as if we and you haven't taken a hard look. We've been giving them this data since 2021. At no time have they asked us to perform additional surveying and testing. They followed the normal procedures. They wanted additional. That's fine. They asked for additional. We gave them additional. And at no time until January 10th, right before.
I'm missing some of your timeline. You started in 2021, but you said your first letter is that you didn't get until 2023. What happened for two years?
No, we made, to the Army Corps, we made another submission to the Army Corps because they asked for further information in, in May, as you cited to, I think, the May. And we made the submission in June 21st, 23, and that included some updated information. And they said at that point, they had no further until we heard from them January, January 10th.
If you can get us a copy of all the correspondence so that all the board can see, I think that that would be valuable. Because again, we haven't seen the correspondence from the Army Corps. We've just been seeing the same data that you're submitting to them, but we haven't seen their conclusions or their reliance on Fish and Wildlife to create some comments.
So I just, just to give my two cents, I don't think anybody here is saying that, you know, there's all of a sudden grave doubts. It's just that there was an agency that we rely on to give, to weigh in on this, who has expressed some doubt, and we've received a lot of information in the last 36 to 72 hours. And not to mention today's 59-page. We're just asking for time, because when we do a neg deck, we want to make sure that we are all comfortable and confident that we've, everybody's done the hard look. And I, I'm listening to you, and I, I'm not disagreeing with you. I feel like you guys have done a fair job of, of doing everything that's needed to, to build the case for a negative declaration. But on the day of, to me, it's the same thing as if you walked in with a change to the site plan. I can't, can't vote on it that night because I haven't had a chance to.
But nothing, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say, and this is sort of where I tried to be started, is nothing has changed except, and I understand your reaction, this letter, the January 10th letter. The conditions, all the facts, have not changed in, from any of our habitat assessments or any other report that we've given them. They have said now, at the end of this day, "We're going to want one more test." And we think we've taken the hard look. We think you've taken the hard look. We think, look, we'll continue to talk with them like you all always do with involved agencies. If we do have to ultimately take another test or do another test, and conditions change, new, new information does arise, because there's no new information except them saying, "We want you to do one more test."
They're essentially saying they disagree with your report's conclusion, that there'll be no impact. That's what they're saying.
There's a 59-page document that we need, we need to look at.
You can't ignore it now.
To do diligence. I mean, it would be, it wouldn't be good for us to just rubber stamp something without looking at the paperwork. So they, we might find that there's no, there's not a non-issue. And that's probably what it might turn out to be. But because they threw, they threw us a curveball by submitting something late, we can't act on it appropriately. We just need to look at the document, see what it is, and then, and then go from there.
And I did, I did ask him to address these concerns, but I didn't mean to imply that the board would be prepared to, to vote tonight because the board needs to digest.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, believe me, I'm, I'm not throwing Victoria under the bus or saying that I, I only did this because she has, I did it because I, I thought it would help support what facts I'm presenting to the board. Because I'm, I'm really just summarizing.
Yes. But we need to see that, too. I mean, we don't even have that. So that, that might go a long way in itself. And then that, reading that and the 59 pages, we might say, huh, non-issue. I mean, I'm not speaking for anybody other than myself. You know, that's, that's why, for me, in my world, in my head, transparency is always the best thing and knowing things upfront, so you can address the issue.
I can't. I'll be perfectly transparent. To say, "We need two more weeks to digest all this," is not an unreasonable request by any standard. I understand that. You also have to understand the timing of this is really putting this project at risk. And let me just, we're not going to be able to get the variance. We're going to push back. We'll have no chance of making, being able to do, we were going to ask you to do some reduced tree cutting, assuming we could get our conditional site plan, which you've always made us know that was an absolute minimum before you would even consider. always made us know that was an absolute minimum before you would even consider any tree cutting. And that's why I haven't brought it up, because I wanted to see. We thought, based on if we had the NAGDEC tonight, I don't think there's a lot of site plan issues. We've been working really hard, that there's a very good chance we could have had conditional site plan by February 21st.
Right, but conditional doesn't allow you to cut trees.
It doesn't allow you, but we would have made the request. And, and we were going to reduce it to only do Phase 1, that would have let us come in, so that would be about seven acres. That allows us to not miss an entire construction season till next window that we had agreed to. Now that becomes almost, that ask almost becomes impossible and obsolete. So we now, there's a very good chance that we won't begin to start any tree cutting until next, November of next year.
Yes, Stephanie.
What?
Ways around that. You can have studies performed, so you can do the sonar and echo returns for the bats.
But that's not until May 15.
The May 15.
It's, it's a hard thing to do on, you know, you know, large swath of tree cutting. It's almost, we looked at that, you almost have to do it almost tree by tree.
So can I, can I ask a question? Because you had talked about possibly doing a survey. So it sounded like the first step was that the bat specialist is actually going to look at the trees, and then make some report, and that US Fish and Wildlife Service will opine whether basis on, on the basis of the trees that are present, maybe a survey doesn't have to be done. Or is a survey going to be required regardless? Do you have, do you have a sense of that?
There's, yeah, there's a lot of maybes in that, yes.
So you're not sure at this point?
We're, we're going to have them come out, we're going to have them look at trees and do that, but.
Okay.
If they require a survey, you're not cutting anything anyways, until the survey's coming.
So the survey window for Indiana Bat, according to the Fish and Wildlife Service site, is May 15th, right? But that's now outside of your tree cutting timeframe. So did you believe that you could do nine acres and still do a bat survey? That you could cut nine acres and clear nine acres and do a bat survey?
If you, if you and the Army Corps, remember, the US, the Fish and Wildlife is only recommendation.
To Army Corps?
To the Army Corps. So if the Army Corps would have, would allow us to do it, and we've been in touch with Brian Orzell and have talked with him, here, here's the whole absurdity of this. Brian Orzell, the Army Corps, already issued the nationwide.
But that was, I think, another thing we had a question about.
Well, now, they issued the nationwide, because they allowed the 45 days to expire, because the Army Corps, based on our application, did not think there was any significant impacts on the site. So they allowed the 45-day. However, he called me the other day, and he said, Mike, I've seen some stuff on SHIPO going back and forth. Do I, do I have to reopen or file this? And said, no, we worked out with CHIPO. He goes, okay, good. He goes, what about Fish and Wildlife? I said, well, I think we're good. Then, three days later.
You get this.
We get this.
And it hits his desk.
So it hits his desk, too. So he's sort of also, yeah, same thing we're in.
So I just, I, I understand very well, time is money and how this process works. But I just want to posit that if we, if we vote on it in three weeks, that means you lose four weeks with the zoning board, right? Because you have to, I think they meet once a month?
They meet once a month.
Once a month. I haven't heard any indication the board does not support this project. I'm not sure, in those three weeks, we read the documents, you guys can talk to Fish and Wildlife, and maybe we get a lot resolved. And, and you haven't lost a year, you've lost a month. I, I'm just, I can't compute the losing of a year. And, believe me, I respect time is money in this business. So I, I just want to know what I'm missing here, that we can't take the three weeks to try to resolve it.
I'll also just point out real quickly that the other reason why I need some time is you're relying on the land cover analysis, forest cover, in Mr. Tishman's letter to Mr. Orzell. It's also, I think, submitted to us, this isn't, doesn't say anything.
Michael, your answer to your question is, it probably does include Bellifield, because that.
It doesn't look like that on the images.
It was in 2021, this, the images.
So that's just going to take over the small amount that's here. It should take over the entire area. This is Seeker, this is Seeker, it should be taking over the entire area that'll be removed.
Put in 20, no, it, it looks at the conditions, you know, the tree cover as of, so it looked at the tree cover as of 2021. So I would, so, yes, I would submit that it probably doesn't cover the, doesn't cover the 25-plus acres that have been cut. But respectfully, 6,440 minus 25.
I'm just saying that we should have accurate numbers here, and this is, this is sort of like a secret document, it's like traffic. If you're doing, evaluate traffic, look at what else has been approved, and include that into your traffic load.
Okay, look, that's.
That's all.
We just have to adjust that percentage.
Let me, I started on this, yes.
So, Michael, you know, you had talked about conditional site plan approval. We typically don't, and a lot of other boards don't either, grant conditional site plan approval until, until like an applicant, and I've been on like the receiving end, when I represent, you know, applicants, applicants also, that, that, that the particular applicant is pretty far down the road with other agencies, like, in this case, DOT, Department of Health, I don't know that, you know, the railroad is, I, you know, I guess they're an involved, you know, agency, but.
They're interested.
But, you know, we'd want it to have some correspondence. So in other words, what I'm saying is, you know, you were talking about February, and, you know, I don't know if you can say that you've submitted to all these agencies and they're under review, or?
We can.
Yeah.
We've submitted to the DOT, the entire design, we submitted to the DOT. We've submitted to the Department of Health. The Department of Health gave us comments back last week. They did plan markups, they didn't do an actual comment letter. They gave us a set of plan markups. I think you guys might have been, the comments we got from Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority two weeks ago, I think the town was copied on those.
I mean, that's going to be up to them. I mean, whatever they decide is not really a concern of ours.
But I guess we made our, we made our submittal to them in early December.
So you're into them.
We responded to the round of comments. So we've been diligent about getting in front of the municipal and the regulatory.
Any luck with the railroad in terms of getting a?
Yes, so we've, we've got, so with the railroad, in terms of the review process, you have to initiate a permit process. You then have to deposit a fee with the railroad. So they've given us the fee that they're asking for to do their initial review. NRI needs to cut them a check in order for them to conduct a review of our plans. We have had, just for the record, they've done a, something that they're not going to give us in writing yet, because they have to have the permit and the fee. They've informed us the drainage is not going to be an issue already. They've looked at our SWIP. There's no issue with their existing culvert. They do, as you had indicated, they want to be a part of the blasting process. They want to be notified, and I believe we've incorporated in the NAGDEC that both them and the DOT need to be notified prior to any blasting and what the blasting schedule is. And they do, they're going to be looking like the DOT for us to measure certain velocities.
All right, so you're into the agencies.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Pete, we took that, I mean, we took that to heart. Yeah, I remember, use the analogy, you know, we're going to want.
Running three ways coming for home. That's right.
So we, you know, we've been up to wit with Fish and Wildlife. See how well that worked out.
Yeah, I know, and, and, you know, like, the reason for that is, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty like simple, that, you know, if the board, if the board approves, like, plans, and, and this isn't in your case, because you have made a submission, but if somebody hasn't even submitted to whatever the agency is, and then the plans start changing because of all agency comments, then the plans that have been approved by the planning board are not really the plans that are going to be signed. So this brings up other issues. And, you know, this board, this board is, I'm, I gotta choose my words right, but I was going to say, I was going to say, no, no, I'll just say, more, more lenient than some other boards in terms of agencies. Chris and I both know, you know, a local board, that you don't get conditional until you have the letters from the agencies that says approved. And there are some boards, you know, I'm sure that you've seen them, too, that will do the same thing. You know, this board at least wants to know, again, using the baseball analogy, you know, you're rounding third coming for home, there's not going to be a lot of plan changes, so.
Yeah, yeah, understood.
Getting to approvals, I just want to point out two things. We don't even have a preliminary plat set yet, just the sketch plan, and so, you know, that's needed.
We can't approve a site plan unless it's the entire site.
And then, what we're talking about with the tree cutting, it should be a phase, it sounds to me like what you are proposing is a phased site plan, with Phase 1 being whatever you're proposing, and Phase 2 being the next phase, and so on, with each one being a separate independent plan that has its own conditions attached. I'm not sure if the board will accept that phasing, but that's, it sounds like that's what you're proposing. And so that hasn't been submitted yet either.
Yeah, I think, Victoria, what Michael was referring to, we provided the sequencing plans in, to the board.
Yeah, but that's not a site plan.
I, I just, just to clarify for the record, what, what he's referring to is, there was eight phases of it, and it encompassed 27.3 acres of total disturbance. Here's referring to the felling of the trees occurring over two sequences, one being nine and a half acres, and then the other second one being 17 and a half acres. So the nine and a half would encompass.
Until there's a signed site plan, construction sequencing doesn't start. So maybe you want to consider phasing the site plan.
And by the way, this is also new information for us, that you're going to do 9.5 at one point, and then 17.5 the next.
Well, I'm just clarifying what he was.
I know what you're clarifying. What I'm trying to tell you was, this would need to go into the NAGDEC as well. I don't have a NAGDEC prepared tonight, because of all this light information coming forth. That's really the crux of this. I'm not going to approve something that the rest of the board hasn't already, already read. Literally hasn't read, and needs to be updated. Chris, did you get us the new, did you get us the revised EAF, where you actually make sure that the, that you don't do all the rock crushing in the first phase of the project?
Yeah, no, we, our intent was not to do all the rock crushing in the first phase. We had it going through Phase 7 in our plans.
In the, go ahead.
So, so there's some inconsistencies between the FEAF and the construction staging plan, which was the later document. So I know for the NAGDEC, I had pulled off the disturbance area numbers from the phasing plan. So, but I think that if the rock processing isn't happening in that stage, then the NAGDEC just has to be updated. And I think you were having that discussion with, with Pete.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, you know, the one thing, that's the one thing that I noticed, and that's why I had emailed you.
Yeah. We were pulling these off.
I, I picked it up as well, when I was reviewing the NAGDEC.
Because I asked, I had asked Bonnie yesterday, I said, where did, where did, you know, you see this? And she, that's when she said it was in, you know, the EAF.
Yeah, I'm going to have to find that. We had that on our phasing plans through Phase 7, but.
I just want to get it right, so that, you know.
Listen, that's, listen, I totally get your desire to do a due diligence, based upon the document you received. And I just, I just want to clarify a few things. One.
Can you talk into the mic, Chris?
Yeah, I am, just, so, I just want to clarify, the June submittal that I referred to is the Army Corps' submittal for the pre-construction notification. That went in June. That had the reports in it that US Fish and Wildlife is referring to in their letter that went to everybody. That's the reports that they're referring to and that they're reviewing. I understand from the correspondence this evening, that you haven't been copied on the October correspondence from the US Fish and Wildlife, and you're adjusting receipt of last Thursday's correspondence from US Fish and Wildlife. So I understand you want us to get you that interim correspondence, and put that in your hands, and we will do that. We will speak to Delta as it relates to that. With regards to your desire to take a look at this in a few weeks, I think that's a fair compromise.
And I want to make sure that we have a very clean version of the findings statement.
And we, let us go back and do our due diligence with US Fish and Wildlife, with Mr. Fishman, who has been brought on, and get you his studies as well, and whatever findings we can get from US Fish and Wildlife and Army Corps to move forward with this. And then we can discuss the next steps. I think Michael's, was very articulate in talking about tree felling, but I think that's a discussion for a later date. I think we need to move on from where we're at right now, because we're not making progress.
Well, obviously, we're going to get you everything you want and need. I mean, that goes without saying, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just talking real with you guys. I'm being, that's, that's the only way I know how to do it, is let you know if this pressures we're dealing with, why. Otherwise, I would have sat here and said.
I think we know the pressures, you know, because you keep pressuring us equally. I'll make sure that we're all aware of that, it's on the record.
Good.
So, I mean.
I have a quick question.
Yes. Microphone?
They're going to talk, Michael.
Yeah, I don't know. I like to talk, you guys know that. If, if this letter had come out next week, instead of last week, would we have our approval tonight?
It's not an approval.
Would we have the?
Determination?
Yeah.
Yes, because you would have gulled, fooled, and lied to us, basically, so, yeah.
Well, no.
On the record as well?
I would not have done that.
Mr. Dutton, so what?
I'm just curious.
One more time, we asked for a record of all correspondence outside agencies. We have not received that. I want to make sure we all understand that. It's, I understand that you can do this on your own, because you're going through NEPA. In effect, not even just effect, the Army Corps of Engineers is its own lead agency when you go through the National Protection Act, Environmental Protection Act. But we should still know about it, because these are agencies that, if their concerns are there, then do we share the same concerns? That's what happened, and getting this out, it was, yes, the resolution's prepared, the findings statement was ready to go, but that's when we were looking through the findings statement, it's like, do we have everything we need? That was basically it, and we were looking at the Army Corps stuff.
It's a bad hiccup, is what really.
And by the way, if we had known that, of course, you said that you didn't know it until January as well, that they had further concerns, but had they had concerns, as I said, the quickest, by the way, the quickest survey is to do the acoustic, I'm sure you know that, it's a lot better than netting.
Can't, can't, can't do it till.
No, not until May 15th, I know. That's why I was like, when I, when I was going through stuff, I thought, uh-oh. But had, had they conveyed it to you as well, and I have defended you guys many a time, I'm going to do it again, Army Corps is not the fastest to receive responses back. I know this. It's, there's just Brian doing basically everything. He's got staff, but he's the one who has to decide. So if you were receiving sort of on good faith, oh, everything's fine, you would have been thinking, this won't be a problem, because the condition would have just been getting the permit. That's all. So, but give us some time, let's, I'm going to see if we can make a list of things. I also, this is really pick a yin, but you have listed in letters that are addressing Seeker, you have 26 acres of tree removal, then you have 27 in this letter, then I believe Mr. Lapine just said 27.3. It'd be nice if the numbers added up the same everywhere, it was the same thing with Bonnie with the question.
Just so you understand that, when we say 27.3, that's the total disturbance. That's not necessarily the tree removal, but the 27.3 includes the work we're doing within the DOT right away on the existing pavement as well. So there's not necessarily tree removal in the pavement.
So we're just going to go with 27 rather than 26, because you've outlined the two phases, so thank you.
Thanks for that clarification.
So let's schedule this for the first meeting in February, that's the 7th, and.
Do we want to just go over the other site plan issues that came up, the HVEA letter?
Yes, so.
About the offsite parking and.
HVEA strongly recommends that you landbank, I think, 68 spaces. Is there a location you could put that on your site for? I don't know where it would be.
I don't either.
I don't think you can.
I mean, literally.
It, it's a pretty constrained site.
Absolutely.
And that's why we're on that CIA campus.
Yeah, I think essentially everything to the north of the Marichikil that is available has been used, because pieces have been taken out between pre-contact and wetlands and historic sites.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And.
And otherwise you'd have to. And otherwise, you'd have to go-
Stay with the contours, stay with the topo. We're not trying to level, clear, create more buildables. Yeah.
By the way, if we did the calculations right, it's, you're bringing in a lot of fill. Is it 29? Wait.
Well, you're bringing in almost, what, 19, 19,000 yards of fill in that 20 yards, I mean, for like a 10-wheeler is usually 20, 20 yards. That's 900, that's 900 trucks.
Yeah. You gotta think about when you're doing these fill calculations, and we're looking at finish grades versus existing grades. So-
Yeah.
A lot of that is asphalt that's coming in. You've got your-
Yeah, but you take that out of your cut and fills, then, I mean-
So we assume that's a 16-inch-thick base.
Yeah.
But that's coming back in for your fill. For your concrete, your sidewalks.
I mean, I'll have to look at it again, but it's still, again, what I said to, what I said is that, look, it's like a lot of trucks, but they're coming over state roads and county roads. So if they were coming over town roads, it'd be more of an issue. But just from, you know, a dollars and cents, like, standpoint, that's, 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 you know, a lot of money to be trucking in, film interior, but that's part of the project cost. That's what, you know, Consigly's doing. That, you know, their cost estimating of career.
It's, and you also have to remember, this is something that's gonna occur over a three-and-a-half to four-year period. It's not gonna occur within one year. So when you look at those 900 trips-
But it's still, but it's still like money. But again, that's not, that's not, you know, the town's concern. That's the app, that's, you know, the applicant's concern. So, but again, as far as that issue goes, I was surprised, but again, then I thought about it, you know, wherever the sources are gonna come from, and we're gonna, I think it's, I think it's already in here, that, you know, on my recommendation, that, that we at least be told where, you know, the sources of fill are gonna come from, you know, all over the place, that there be no C and D material, which you're not gonna want to, like, accept or contend, you know, just general stuff that we know is not gonna happen, but we're gonna put notes on that.
Pete, can you explain what C and D material is?
Huh?
Can you explain what C and D refers to?
Construction and demolition debris.
No, I know. I'm just, in case somebody's watching on TV, grade C, grade D, no.
Like SWIP, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Like, what the heck is that, SWIP, right?
Yeah, we, we can certainly put a note on our-
We can certainly put a note on our plans. It's not a big deal. It's just, you know, when the, when, when, you know, it came up about 18,000 yards of material coming in, I was like, whoa, that's a lot of material. And then, again, but-
Is it like 29 ton, how many tons is this?
It's, we, we, we use about one and a half for our conversion, so that's why you have the, it's one and a half yards to tons. So we use about, so your numbers that, I think you asked a question, you know, we have 18,000 yards, you have 27,000 tons, it's a one and a half multiplier.
Okay.
So. Well, that was on your phasing plan. I mean, you had, you had a, you had, you know-
We had all that, we had all that on our phasing plan, so-
So it's roughly 18,000 imports. So, but whatever, you know, it's, again, it's state, it's state and county roads, it's coming over. So it's really, it's really not a concern of the town. And again, like you say, it's gonna be over time.
Correct.
So.
The concern for the town, though, going back to parking, will be what happens if there's not enough room on the CIA parcel. But that'll, that's the only other place to park. There really isn't any room left on the site. I mean, I looked. I just don't see any. So, um-
But there is an agreement.
We'll have, we'll have an agreement with CIA, and look, let's, practical, worst-case scenario, let's say it disappeared at the CIA for some unforeseen reason, we'd end up having to contract with someone else off-site and, and shuttle, because there's no parking on site. And I don't think they're gonna want to close down the event barn, you know?
And this, this is certainly not a SECRE issue, per se, but, um-
It, well, it's a SECRE issue if we were landbanking, because we need to know the disturbance.
It's never a statement from me. When I was going through my notes before I, we got here tonight, we had asked, you, I believe you're only gonna have 10 golf carts, and you said you were gonna get back to me about whether that was really practical, because where I'd been in the Seychelles, had less housing, far more golf carts?
Yeah.
10, so it sounds good.
So, you want a golf cart? Because, so the golf cart situation, if I recall, was, there was gonna be, I think it was 10 to 12 golf carts there, about, that were gonna be general golf carts that would be parked for just general transportation. Then I think what we left out, Michael, which, which I think went to your issue, is many of the villas will have their own golf carts, and will have an area under villa where you can park a golf cart. So, I know the resorts that I, some of these sort of resorts down south where you have something like this, a lot of people did that. They either rented golf carts, or they had their own golf carts that were parked at their, you know, at their villa. So I think that-
So 10 to 12 still sounds adequate for stacked parking to go to a restaurant, a spa, or event, an event.
Yeah. What, let, let me just clarify that, so everybody understands. To leasehold villas is what he's referring to, and will have their carts, golf carts there. I believe in, I believe in the drawings that Michael Gotti shared with everybody, there was room in there for a car to park, along with a golf cart to park. So.
I believe what I was asking one more time was, I'm glad that you clarified that. It means that if I'm staying at a villa, I can drive myself. I take it, and figure out where to park. And you'll assume the liability in case somebody's tipsy. But if you're having an event, and you're having a successful restaurant, and people are going to the spa all at the same time, 12 golf carts is enough.
And, yeah, I'm assuming, Michael, respectfully, I assume they'll buy more at that point.
And then the only question I have is, do you have enough room to store them? That's what, the reason why I asked this in the first place. I don't really give a room posterior at this point about how many you have. What I want to know is that we're gonna have more buildings, more storage. That's all I'm asking. You were supposed to sort of analyze that. I don't think we got a response back to it yet.
We did. We, they came back to us and told us that they think respectfully, 10 to 12 will be enough for the general-
You didn't tell us that. You didn't tell us that, so.
I'm saying what they told.
Then if that's enough, then if you have to buy more and have to start, well, we'll see what happens.
How about we-
Michael, just, I'm sorry, real quick. The parking garage that's proposed by the villas, with the 86 spaces, I don't know how it is constructed, but does the potential exist that there's capacity there, not necessarily going up, but somehow wider, or could you pick up, if necessary, a change out of the mechanicals to put in more cars there?
Stackers?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure you could go another level, certainly.
She didn't say up, she meant wider.
Yeah, understood. Um, yeah, right now, we've maximized the footprint that we can for the, for those stackers.
I thought, I could go-
Yeah, no, it, there's no-
You'd have to go up higher, that'd be it. And then you have, you go above the berm along Route 9.
So, so would it, would it be beneficial to the board if we include in our NEG deck the, how we're accommodating the golf carts on the site in terms of where they're going to be parked, between the back-of-house building and beneath the hearth building?
Yeah.
So we can give that breakdown, and then how we-
In each villa.
It's like, because, again, you're so tightly, you're using all the space so tightly that I don't think, I don't know where else you would put any excess if you had them. So we'll put this on the agenda for February 7th, A. B., do we give you enough information for, we're still looking for? Basically, a model we're looking for is me sitting down, or us sitting down and reading all the literature we got to the very end, and then making sure that we have a correctly done findings statement that has accurate numbers, et cetera, in it.
You, you want, and we'll help you compile, you want all the different back-and-forth correspondence that we have. We'll make sure you have, um-
Again, if we'd been seeing it, it wouldn't have been a shock, I think. We probably, that's another thing, Michael, Mr. Gotti. If we'd been reading it, seeing it come at the very end, might've been a shock to us, too, to request. But it might've made us understand that it was unreasonable. But we didn't have any of the antecedent letters. So we just see for the first time that they're saying, "Hey, we have some concerns. We think you need to do more."
I understand.
That calls, that's alarm bells for me, so.
So we'll, we'll make sure we get that all to you ASAP. Um-
Thank you.
I will not, I will not provide you 70-page letters anymore, I promise. I wasn't even-
Cynthia, I didn't even realize that about-
Seventy, I thought it was three. And then Cynthia said, "Do you know there's 67 pages behind the three-page?"
There are 4 pages.
Yes.
And I can't print it out, so.
She didn't have enough time.
It would be good also if we did, if we could get that final draft on the week before the 7th, so that we know it's done.
Your findings statement, your draft on the findings statement.
Well, that, we need, yeah, we should work-
Listen, we're, we're very close, but it's just-
We're very close.
We're close.
And again, the rock crushing thing, that this isn't a findings statement. If it's not gonna all be done in the very first phase, which I didn't think it was going to be, that needs to be adjusted, that, that, you drew that from the EAF. The EAF needs to be changed as well. And Cynthia's gonna quote, because how many FEAFs have we had?
A lot.
I, I, I just think as a, if I had to predict, and maybe it's just something to keep in mind when you're reviewing all the Corps of Engineering material and doing our SECRE, I hope we can, in a week, come to some path forward with them immediately that doesn't require a May further testing. I'm not super optimistic that in a week we'll be able to do that. I understand that you're gonna need, see everything we've seen that supports our argument for going forward. I, I, we will try, of course, as we have the last, since we got this letter, we've been on a fire drill to try to get them to outline a path that you would've felt comfortable with. It's not like I didn't expect, you know, a little bit of this reaction.
No, I, I asked Victoria to call you, and she said, "Oh, he was pretty calm," and I went, "What?" I was expecting, you know, Reagan from the exercises with your head spewing and, you know, green stuff flying, so.
So, I just think, well, whenever everybody's reviewing all this material, there's a very good chance we're gonna be back to where we are, us saying, "Can we move forward based on this?" And I'm just putting it out there. We're gonna try.
No, no. Once again, what I'd like to point out is, is that, again, because this is new information, and the rest of the board wasn't digesting it the way I was the last two days, because we were going back and forth so fast on it, that it may be that the board will conclude that if the Army Corps feels that there's more mitigation required, that that's what you'll have to do.
Look, if the Army, you know, if the Army Corps has a future requirement, then we're gonna be back to you.
I've explained this-
And we're gonna say whether it's, whether we have to modify supplement SECRE, or, and/or modify us, our design and site plan and amendment.
So, if we go through with the NEG deck, I think it just needs to be understood, and you don't get, let's say, planning board issues in NEG deck, but you haven't heard back yet from Fish and Wildlife Service, sort of what's the next phase? Because between then and site plan, if there's an expectation that you want to cut a certain amount of trees, or, I think the board has to know that sooner than later, to be able to, to consider it.
The board does then have the ability to say, "I can cut trees." Find me a provision in the code that says that.
Well, I think the expectation is that you'll be approving before, and they will be able to go out and cut trees before-
Site work is not allowed until there's a signature on the plan.
Well, let's, let's-
That's our policy.
But that's, that's, I think, an expectation.
I'm just saying, that's the town policy, but I'm looking at TAD because there's, TAD? It's in the code. This is what it says.
Yeah.
So, I don't know what, what section that we would allow that we could say we were gonna vary that, so, we can explore that, though.
Yeah. I, I see that as an expectation, and so I think that they're better, it's best to have a communication sooner than later.
I, I don't wanna-
I think we're gonna need to put that in the parking lot for now.
I don't wanna, I don't, I don't wanna keep this up, but-
I'm pretty concerned if we could do that in an offline meeting, but I mean-
Yeah, not tonight, but, not, not to be surprised.
I'd like to-
I like to go offline.
I mean, you, you did apply for a tree clearing permit that doesn't exist, so I know what your interest is.
Well, we'd love to have something that does. It makes it so much easier.
Chris would like this.
You, you had a, you spoke of the 68 spaces, and that was from, was it 68?
HVEA, the law.
From HVEA.
That was-
But I, what I heard was that the board did not feel, they heard the, they heard the opinion, but they're not requiring it.
If there's not room, there's not room. I, I don't-
Okay, I just, I, I'm-
Shred it by saying, "Get rid of some villains," which will make you happy. Ha, ha, ha.
We're all hearing a couple things tonight for the first time. This was one of them as well.
I was gonna say, we also, we had asked-
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six, I'm sorry, I inverted the numbers. I inverted the numbers. I apologize. We had asked our traffic consultant a while back to give us a final sign-off, because he requested what he requested.
Which he did, I'm sorry.
And then he, you gave it, but then we didn't get anything, and so Cynthia said, you know, "They're considering taking an action on this Wednesday," so that's why we got the letter, but that's why it's late as well. And that was late to us. That's why I was, I looked around, like I said, quickly, and I don't see any room for 86 spaces, so.
Well, actually, I do have a question. So the agreement with the CIA for the 86 spaces is done, or will be done by the time we're dealing with the NEG deck?
No, will be done by the time, it is done verbally. We don't, we don't have it in writing. There is a commitment.
Of the law.
By the condition of-
There was a commitment that was forwarded via an email to the town.
Correct. No, that's why I want to know if it was done.
You have that, yes.
That's why that, the letter was-
Yeah, it's a commitment.
You have to prove the subdivision first.
We can't hear you guys over there?
Talking, we're talking about the subdivision.
Trying to get on the same page about, and I'm asking Victoria, the timing for the subdivision, relative to site plan. So the answer is-
The answer is, the board approves the subdivision first in the site plan.
Because the site is the site. It's not two sites.
Yeah.
So, are you guys ready to apply for final plat approval?
I think so.
We did sketch.
We did sketch, right. You, you said that we would go through SECRE, we, I think you said that condi, it would be a condition to final site plan approval.
There is no final site plan approval.
To plat.
But the filing of the approved plat is a condition of site plan approval. The board has to approve the plat so that we have a reference.
To allow it to be a condition.
Yeah.
Correct. Of the site plan. So you gotta get both the town signature and the Board of Health, and then we file it, then we come back to you with a consolidated plan, and that goes in our site plan.
Understood.
Mm-hmm. But right, and first we're approved it.
You're doing.
First, you need to have the huge apply.
Well, you, you have to get-
You have to apply for it.
You, 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 well, we've applied-
For sketch.
For sketch, correct.
The next step is to go directly to final.
Correct.
I believe we've said this before as well.
You know, I understood that we had to go through SECRE first before we made that final submission.
No.
No?
You don't have to. I mean, it's-
They can't approve it, but-
Right, they can't approve it until-
Correct. All right. So I-
I'm just saying, if you guys are looking, you, we're hearing that you want to expedite your project. We are pointing out areas where-
And we appreciate it.
And my, we were going to submit that with our final set to you for approval, because I, I believe you've made some comments on architecture that we would have to revise our drawings and resubmit.
Wait, the plat, the plat is a sep, subdivision approval's a separate action. It's not, it's not stuck with the site plan.
We were going to, what I'm referring to is, we were going to resubmit our plan set and our plat, because I understood there were some outstanding comments related to architecture, and-
But that has nothing to do with the plat?
The plat and site plan are separate.
I, I know, but what I'm, what I'm referring to is, when we make our submittal to the town, we were going to submit before a planning board meeting. That included our plat and any revisions to the architecture.
But I think, I think, Chris, what they're saying is-
We could submit the plat now.
As soon as we can.
Thank you for understanding that. I thought that was plain language, sorry. But yes, the faster you submit the plat, the better it is for us. And-
Do you want to get into tonight at all, you know, Rob and, and Michael, and it's been, you know, and some of you also brought up some other architectural, defenstration, attenuation, those type of things. Do you want to get into that tonight at all, or do you want to wait till the 7th and combine it with a real quick boom-boom NEG deck, and then we jump right into it?
Do it also.
How's that for optimism?
I think that-
Trying to get us back into the smiling.
You mean with a NEG deck, not a boom-boom.
NEG deck, right. Get it, get it.
We wanna leave a smile.
Or.
The resolution's already written. We just have to perfect the finding statement. That's basically it. And I think I'd prefer to wait, because my head's a little spinny.
Correct.
At this point.
I was getting that feeling.
Would that be something for an offline meeting between you guys?
What's that?
If, if you're talking about architecture, like, details, would, would that be an offline meeting?
We could do that. We could do that for sure. Because I'm out of the country on the 7th.
When, when are you out of the country?
I won't be here on the 7th, but we'll, we'll have representation. I'll make sure somebody's here.
When do you leave?
Uh, the week before that. The, the week.
I'm just saying, you mean schedule the meeting.
You wanna go?
Are you gonna be?
No, we can do the offline meeting.
Yeah, where are you going?
Sure, yeah, I'm here next week.
Next week, offline meeting, for sure.
Yeah, where are you going?
Uh, you guys wanna come? That's fine.
No, actually, I won't be here either. I won't be here to vote on the NEG deck either. I'll be in Anguila. So we're both taking off the Dominican.
Oh, everything better be wrapped up before he leaves.
It will be.
Oh, what you're gonna miss.
It will be. It will be. It will be.
We could definitely do an offline meeting, yeah.
And by the way, remember, the Caribbean is the same, same timeframe as here, so I can.
It's a lot.
Oh, why you got it?
At any rate, so.
Guys, right?
Yes, gotcha.
Chris and.
What are you two, rolling dice so embarrassing?
I already called nine. And where are you going?
He did this, so I would.
Just chair.
I know, I know.
Okay, so let's, we, we've exchanged plenty of emails every day, I know. So let's just keep this rolling, keep it moving back and forth. And if I hear anything from my colleagues of concern, I will let you know immediately. But I think mostly, I mean, literally, the discussion that I heard was, we need time to sort, just to read everything. Because it was 60 pages, basically. So, and I personally would like for you to see a little change in this, just because we're using it, you're using the land, the land cover. Can you just take out what's the approved acreage for Bella Field? There's nothing else that's approved as far as I know of?
Yeah, and not just the, not just the acreage that's been cut now, but the acreage that will be cut.
That's what I was gonna say. That's because it's already approved, it's gonna be cut.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, and then this, they, they, this is 2021, so part of Hudson Heritage is shown. But the other part that, that would still be cut would be the residential housing. And I think that's on, mostly on the great lawn. So it's already cut?
I think Michael worked on that project, right?
Most of the residential housing in my property, it's in the areas that are previously developed.
Right, that's what I was saying. They're already cleared. I'm sorry, maybe you didn't hear me. But yes, it's called the great lawn.
But they probably in 2021 weren't cleared when, when we did the tree survey.
Oh, the, the stuff in the rear, that's been cleared now?
That's all been cleared. That's a lot of building.
Is that, would that be reflected in this, in the imagery that we're seeing here?
It was already.
Probably not if we were using 2021. So we'll, we'll look at that.
Oh.
It's clear. No, no, it's, he's not saying whether it's clear, he's saying whether it's reflected in the.
Is it in the numbers?
And whether it's, and this isn't just, he doesn't want it just to show what's been cleared, but what's been approved for clearing.
Right.
It's, it's the approval, it's what's approved to be cleared, this we know will be cleared, because you're relying on all this other forestry, forestry station to say there's plenty of room for bats, but if the numbers aren't, you're still gonna be way above what you need to be. But they should still be accurate.
We're gonna be significantly above their 35% with it. And I would be.
First I heard it was 30, now it's 35.
It is 35%.
Someone misspoke.
I was being conservative. You know me.
All right. Anything else that they need to know?
Not for tonight, but I'm sure we'll be in touch with each other. A lot of people in touch.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the baroness.
Glad you're leaving with a smile.
Very patient.
What's that?
I'm glad you smiled.
Well, he was, he's worried. He had a chance to digest a lot of this, because they got this on the tongue.
Yeah, they're the same point.
So the next item on the agenda is grounded dispensary. That was for seeking site plan approval for a cannabis retail dispensary. All we're here tonight to do is to type the act, you don't have to do anything, you didn't have to come.
Sorry, we enjoyed it.
You know what I love is, it's the glasses. I haven't seen you in yours tonight, but it's all three of you at, like, the square.
All the great, great frames.
And then the round, yes. The family that, that likes eyewear, fashionable eyewear stays together, you know. So, yes, go ahead, come up for the microphone.
These are microphones.
Yes. Just a couple of things. We were thinking of making the sign a little bit bigger, because as it sits on the road, you know, looking for the road, maybe just four inches, we'll need to do a.
It just has to stay, it has to stay within the dimensional allowance in the code. If it gets bigger than what the code allows, which I believe is six feet tall with an extra foot, I should know this, but an extra foot, I think, regressive.
Size of letters.
The letters are supposed to be 10 inches?
Yeah, if you go, then you need an area variance.
You need a variance, because we can't change those.
That goes to zoning?
Yep.
Okay. So we can do that.
Which we do quite frequently.
And if it's, so again, if the code, if the sign that you're proposing is, adheres to the dimensional requirements in the code, the maximum height, maximum width, all that, then we can approve as part of site plan. If they exceed that, we can't do anything about that except for, for, what's that called, a monument sign like you're proposing, you know, the one outside? We can't do anything with the letters either. If it's on the building, we can increase every inch for every 20 feet, it's set back for the primary roadway.
There, there's anything on the town road as well.
Oh, that's right.
So it's, I know, we tried looking at that with that.
So it's not gonna work. Yeah, so at any rate, but if you wanna go big with letters or either, or height, if it exceeds six feet, you want it to be six foot four, whatever.
Right.
That has to be a variance for the zoning.
Okay, so if we get, apply for the variance prior to getting site, site plan approval?
Yes, you should apply for it right now.
All right, so we'll do that now.
See, let me explain again. SECR's been done on this, or, rather.
Yeah, no, there's, I mean, as you know, there's a moratorium. I'm not sure that they can process it or approve it.
Right, right, right. We're aware of the moratorium.
But that, would, that's an interesting question. Would a variant, granting a variance for a sign be?
Depends on how it was written.
Correct, because I can see how you could see it as not.
Actually, we write it.
It's not approving the use. That's, it's not approving the use, that's us. They'd just be proving something that would be part of a site plan that we couldn't approve until the moratorium's up, unless they get their waiver.
It would be up to the town attorney how, how the moratorium was drafted.
That's what I thought. That's much too deep.
Yeah, I mean, we're just looking to make the sign on both the building and the road sign 12 inches, so.
You mean the letters, 12 inches?
The letters, sorry, yes.
That would have to go to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, so we'll do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do it separately outside of the site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really the only thing that we're gonna change.
Any other questions?
That's it.
Okay, we're gonna, we're prepared to take action tonight, and I believe this will be moved by Mr. V.
Yep. Resolution classifying the action and referring the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, Resolution 2023-73, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, number one,